It is six o'clock. We'll call this here meeting ordered.
Yes, I like it though.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mike, I got your chair set up for you right there. I did. I saw it was a regular metal one. I swapped it out just for him. Alrighty, call of the roll. Four Acre.
Present.
Ms. Edler.
Present.
Ms. Schaefer is absent this evening. Mr. Fordice.
Present.
Mr. Campbell is also absent this evening. Uh, number four, approval of the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda.
I second it.
Roll call, Four Acre.
Aye.
Edler.
Aye.
Schaefer is absent. Campbell is absent. Fordice.
Aye.
I learned last time not to mess up the order. It throws you guys off, so.
Thank you.
I'm here for you. Here for you. Uh, on to number five, citizen hearing and other communications. Uh, it looks like neither Lieutenant nor Mr. Dre or Fire Chief are here. Uh, we do have a report, um, from Mr. Dre. Does anybody have it pulled up? If not, I do here quick. Uh, if at any point Lieutenant Grego does stop in or a deputy will pause at that point and we'll go back to allow them to give a report, so. Yeah, if you would, please.
Um, ten calls total, six medical, one investigation, one fire, one hazmat assignment, and one public assist. The ice rescue equipment has been ordered but not arrived yet. Um, Santa and Mrs. Claus will be at the fire station on December twenty first at two o'clock. As always, we're looking for new and potential members. If anyone has interest, please reach out.
Uh, one thing I'd add to that, they usually, Santa and Mrs. Claus get a tour of the city on one of the fire apparatus prior to them being at the fire station, so just a heads up for anybody who may be interested or anybody who's in town with kids or whatnot, so. Um, that usually happens. I hope it doesn't happen again because it's usually pretty cool to see, so. Can you confirm or deny that again?
That is the plan.
That is the plan. Okay, cool. So, just want to make sure we got that out there as well. Yes. Santa's like the USPS.
As long as Santa holds on.
Yes, three points of contact, absolutely. All right, uh, again, we'll come back to Polk County Sheriff if they, uh, are able to stop in. Uh, on to number three, any public comments? Yes, sir.
Ron Adams here. I had a question. Uh, we missed the groundbreaking on the convenience store in November, and I forgot to ask. Is it because the two are going in out at the interstate? They're not going to do this one now?
What you touch on that, Mr. Flores, if you'd like?
There is, so no, there was no groundbreaking. You did not miss one. Uh, and no, it has nothing to do with any other interests or interstates or anything. Um, they're just waiting on the bank. Apparently, the entire gas station funding industry is waiting on banks. His is one of seven projects that they're working on and talked to him, what was it, last week again, and he has everything approved. He's just waiting on an appraisal letter from the bank, so.
I just wondered. I know for a fact, two of them are going in the interstate out here, so I've seen.
Yeah, he's, he's well aware. It didn't have any impact at all on his plans, but again, we're just, it's his project. We're just waiting to get updates on it. So as soon as we get an update, we'll get one scheduled and let everybody know, so.
I am going to drive down it the other day too. Uh, Maple Street's got a nice big chuck hole in it. I realize we don't have anything, uh, planned for any of that, especially this time of year, but, uh, it just passed where they tore the house down and got the cones on the sidewalk that's never been replaced.
Got it written down. I think Katie's got it written down as well. We'll get with, uh, Ron and Rick, see if there's, if we can do anything this time of year.
They just show coal patching, that's all they do.
Yeah, you know how well that stuff will hold up if we do an extensive repair this time of year, so. No, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
That's it.
Awesome. Anybody else? Any other public comments going once, going twice? Comment session is closed. On to number six, reports of elected officials, city staff, and standing committees. Mr. Walker, we'll start with you.
Well, um, Polk County Emergency Management, uh, one thing that they're really working on is trying to get all of the different jurisdictions uh, in Polk County and surrounding counties to be able to communicate together. Um, currently, they have different dispatch and different, uh, radio waves, so they're trying to get those, uh, all combined. Should make things a lot easier for them to relate.
Very good.
Parks Direct did not meet this month, um, but they do have a few things coming up that will be addressed in, um, tonight's meeting as far as an appointment to the board, as far as, um, a member leaving, and, um, talk about the REAP grant funds for a possible peer in the future.
Yeah. Yeah, it's short and sweet. Um, we just went over the gas station information that I was going to tell you guys. We recovered it. Um, otherwise, P and Z, there's, there was no P and Z meeting, but there'll be one in January, and I think that's it. Everything else is pretty smooth, pretty smooth operation right now.
Uh, Mr. Campbell did have a brief update, uh, that he sent to Katie and I. Um, unless you have any opposition, I'm just going to read what he had sent. It's very, same thing, very short, sweet, to the point. Um, as he just reminded us that he would unfortunately not be here this evening due to work conflict. Uh, Ron and Rick have been busy working the community center with the upgrades, as I'm sure you've all noticed. With new ceiling tiles, new lights, painting is still yet to, yet to come, uh, and a couple other odds and ends. Um, Ron is concerned, as we all should be, about children on the ice at Prairie Point Park. Um, he did have a couple questions to bring up to Mr. Dre, which he unfortunately is not here, uh, to answer those. Um. Uh, Katie, you've got the email. I'll let you forward these on to Scott and double check with him, but the questions were, um, do we have the capability of an ice rescue if need be? And then a follow-up, are all the members of the Elkhart Fire Department trained in this type of operation? Uh, Mike, I'll, I'll ask you since you're here, not in official capacity, but I don't know if you've got any.
We haven't done anything yet, as they're waiting for the ice rescue equipment.
Okay.
You know, there's no sense of trying to train if you don't have the equipment yet.
Fair, fair, fair.
Scott's email noted that it was on order, so it's, it's coming as soon as possible.
Correct, correct, yeah. Uh, just, just reading out the email here. Um, this also serves as a reminder to parents that they are responsible for looking out for their children. They need to be educated on the dangers of ice. Uh, I know we had two instances just last week, one that was reported to City Hall and then another that was posted on social media that children out on the ice and it's been a wave of temperatures up and down and the ice is not established. Uh, the, one of the points I was going to bring up here tonight, I'll kind of skip forward to it, but, uh, we've got signage posted out at the lagoons, former lagoons, the ponds now, um, no ice skating, no ice fishing. I know there's opinions that surround that signage and I respect that, but just because of the temperatures, fluctuations and everything, uh, current signage posted, we need to be staying off the ice. Um, make sure that we're talking to our kids as far as the, the potential dangers and everything. It's tempting, it looks fun, but, um, the last thing any of us want is a, an unnecessary, uh, tragedy or accident to happen, so. Uh, just make sure if we're seeing something, saying something, I appreciate that citizen who made that comment, that said something at the time and then shared it with everybody. That's, that's awesome, so. Um, that was all that, uh, Mr. Campbell had to share. Uh, did Angie have anything?
Um, I can share a little, the cemetery met, um, I think it was in November. Um, we talked about adding some additional lots to the east at the cemetery, so we're going to meet up with Ron, Kornell, myself, and Chip whenever Chip's ready to kind of look at that. Um, also, we talked about the cemetery software, looking at if there's any capability of making that accessible in a read-only version. Um, I did check on that and I don't think the version we have, um, is able to do that. Um, there are no changes to their board members for the upcoming year. They're all going to remain the same. And I think the biggest, um, thing is that we found the veterans' pictures. And so we'll be able to hang those up in here whenever we're done painting, so.
Uh, I had stopped in to touch on that last point, Katie. I had stopped in on Friday. Um, while Ron and Rick were replacing the ceiling tiles, chatting with them. They do have some concerns of the cases that we do have over here and mounting those to the wall. Um, so we need to kind of also take a look at, maybe we get some community suggestions about alternative, be it frames or, or something of lighter weight, uh, because there's, there's nothing behind the paneling except brick wall and maybe a smaller layer or something else, so. Um, those are, while they're nice cabinets, uh, display cases, they're very heavy and they would fall off the wall pretty quick, I think, so. Um, there's.
I'll tell you later.
Okay. Yeah, there's also, what you can do is you can build a frame wall
Mm-hmm.
where you can put the supports behind, anchor it into the brick. There's certain ways to run that behind, and then they would just mount the pictures to that framing, if that makes sense, and you can make it decorative.
And, and.
Make it decorative.
Yeah, if that's viable option, that's awesome. I just, I just don't want to see them. We hang them up, they look great, we go home the next morning, they're all on the floors. I hate to see that, so. So.
Okay, great.
Um.
I'll touch on a couple things, but just if you have other questions, um, feel free to reach out to, um. Well, with the water treatment plant, um, electrical work is almost complete. The heaters are up and running. Um, they're thinking mid-February for the estimated timeframe for startup now. Um, the lift station, we are still waiting on a completion of the final punch list of items for that. Um, they are waiting on allies reply. Community center renovations, we've had, um, LED lights installed in here and the fire station with, um, the use of our ARPA money, and, and we will also be painting the facility inside here, the walls, with that money as well. Um, quick little update with the parks, with the pickleball net. We're going to apply to a Parks Mini Grant to see if we can get that tennis convertible to tennis and pickleball net out here. Um, we got our CDs and money markets all set up. Very excited to see what we gain on, um, interest with those. Um, Elkhart, I'm following up this week with our attorney to see where we're at on that. I did not receive response at all from the contractors involved with it. Um, we're going to go over our budget schedule tonight as well. Do you guys have certain questions for me?
Yes, but I don't know if that's the right time. So you mentioned the mini grant for the pickleball. Actually had, uh, an idea come to me this weekend to potentially, if, if there was a way to drop some type of netting between the two basketball courts, like separating east and west, so into two courts.
Okay.
And then the possibility of doing like a three versus three basketball tournament during like the festival or something like that, like a little kids tournament, some type of a block edge in between that could be put up very temporary. I don't know if the mini grant could include something like for that, because they make stringable net, um, that has a weighting at the bottom, so it wouldn't blow in the wind too bad and.
Okay.
Obviously, weather permitting, but it was just a neat little idea. It wouldn't be much, you know, of a fundraiser or anything, but we have the courts to do stuff like that. They've got fences put up on them.
Sure.
We want people in the park, so if there's a way to include that on a mini grant, or if that's even a thing, that's something that, oh, just a thought, I guess. I didn't want to forget about it all the way down towards other business, so, so, thank you.
So Katie and I attended a budget workshop. Um, we are doing webinars and attending, um, um, meeting about other accounting software, just to get an idea, and we'll see you in a minute. G-Works has to be renewed, so we have like fifteen days. So, that's all I have.
Do you mind, just as far as, uh, annual reports that have been due have been, have looked great, the things that we've seen have, have looked good, is all the reporting that's coming to us from a financial standpoint of where you were when, where it was when you got here to what you've seen now? Do you feel like you have what you need in place going into the budgeting season to accomplish what we need to accomplish? Or are there parts still missing or anything you need from us?
I think we're, we'll be okay with that.
That's awesome. Good to hear. Yeah, thank you. Very good. Uh, got a couple things before I get over to you there, Mike. Um, wanted to, uh, touch on over Prairie Point Park. Ron and Rick had installed some signage as well. Uh, I know that was, uh, brought up by, I believe, Mr. Hess and a few other folks at one point for concerns about where that, uh, that wood fence comes up to where the sidewalk meets. There's a stop sign now for the sidewalk traffic. Uh, there's also a slow pedestrian crossing, something to that effect sign there, uh, that's a fix that you can see, just to kind of get traffic's attention coming in and out of that parking lot. Uh, that's awesome. Uh, unfortunately, but thankfully, whatever word would be best, uh, we also do have the no unauthorized motorized vehicle signs on the path leading towards the lift station. Um, kind of a shame we even had to install those in the first place, but they're there now, so. Uh, I know we're going to add another one over by, um, the, you can get my bearings right, to the east end where it runs all the way to the, towards the new development. Uh, and then over, one over kind of by Mandy, I think is going to eventually be installed there as well, so. Um, so some new signage put up there. Thanks to Ron and Rick for that. Uh, also thanks to Ron, um, cruising around town on Saturday, applying a fifty-fifty mix onto the roads as needed. It was kind of a unique situation with all the ice and the fluctuating temperatures and hovering red freezing that some spots kind of stayed slick, but other spots were, were nice and clear, so, um, kind of hard to combat that sometimes, but, uh, thanks to Ron for that. Um, Katie, I know you and I are going to be working on the, uh, um, state of the city slash end of the year speech, if you will. We're going to go over that on Friday. We've got a, a meeting set up three thirty to go for that, so I'm excited to look over that with you and add some Johnny-isms as well. It's, it's me, so, um, so that'll be fun to, uh, to get that out and delivered. Um. Let's see here, um, had some comments, um, not normally going to address Facebook comments as far as reacting to them, but uh, one thing I'd like us to start doing, any posts that we put out, that's information that is probably going to generate some feedback, whatever, uh, I'd like to start adding, please reach out directly.
Auto reply?
Uh, either, either auto reply or just in the post itself to reach out to you, to you ladies directly. Uh, some folks have been re, uh, responding, having some comments and questions, and that's fine, but we're not always seeing those or following up on them or what have you, so we'd like you, we'd like everybody to reach out to City Hall directly with comments. You can send a, a Facebook message, that's fine, phone call, email, what have you, but, um, a comment on a post may or may not be seen in a timely fashion, so. Uh, I'd encourage folks to do that. Um, I know with the snow ordinance or the snow emergency, there was some concern with that. We're not going to put the snow emergency in effect at two o'clock in the morning, uh, if it starts snowing at one forty-five in the morning. Uh, we have the capability to watch the weather and see the forecasts and we can put it out in advance and give people a heads up. For the most part, folks in town, again, are pretty darn good about getting vehicles off the road anyway. They see the weather reports as well. We will post well in advance, give everybody a fair heads up that, hey, this is going to be enacted overnight, so let's just start snowing, here's the deal. We have realistic expectations, just like everybody else should, so, uh, wanted to touch on that one as well. Um, last thing I've got here, um, going to, not an official announcement, I guess. You and I, I had mentioned, emailed with you earlier this morning, uh, appointments for 2025. I wanted to announce them, but they won't take effect until next, uh, beginning of next year and officially at January's meeting. Um, but going to change up some appointments to the different boards and Metro Waste, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I'll let, I'm going to give those, list those off here in just a moment. Um, any meetings that take place between now and the January council meeting, uh, city council meeting, I'd like the new appointees and previous appointees to still attend both those, so there can be a changing of the guard, if you will. Uh, that way we get just cross-reference information or whatever needs to be done. Um, let me announce those here really quick. Bear with me, I added up here. Uh, so I know we got an email from Metro Waste Authority. We need, uh, some representatives there. Uh, so Jill, I'm going to appoint you, uh, as a representative for Metro Waste Authority.
Is that in addition to the?
Uh, I'm going to be swapping you. I'll get to that here in just a second here. Um, alternate to that would be Marissa, uh, Butler. We need a secondary on that for the Metro Waste. Um, Parks, I'm going to, uh, reassign, uh, reappoint Angie to Parks Board. Um, Fire, Rob, I'm going to keep you there. I think that's a good spot for you. Um, you've got that knowledge and that background. Uh, going to leave Campbell with Streets and Water, Fordice, I'm going to keep you with Planning and Zoning.
Okay.
Um, Jill, I'm going to put you over on Cemetery, uh, and then Rob, I'll ask you to kind of help and fill in as well, if need be, if Jill's not able to make it or what have you. Um, and then same thing with anybody with all departments. If somebody's not able to make a meeting or whatever, I'd like kind of cross-reference and, uh, coverage.
I just have a question. Why are we switching them? I mean, I don't have a problem adding Metro Waste to what I currently do, but, I mean, I was on Parks and Rec for five years. Doesn't it make more sense with the experience I have to stay on the Parks and Recs Board?
I, just from observations, I've had some feedback I've received. I just, I'm wanting to switch things up a little bit. Uh, we can always reappoint, reevaluate if need be, uh, but at this time, I'm just going to make a couple changes, so. Uh, and then, uh, Rob, uh, Polk County Emergency Management, I'll still leave you there. Um, if there's any additional concerns, questions, you guys are welcome to reach out to me. I can consider making changes to this list as well. Again, they're not official as of this time. We got to, I'll, we'll make the announcement and be official appointments then, but I wanted to give you guys a, a heads up of things to come, so. Um, other than that, that's all I've got. A little bit of a lengthy list there, um, but that's, that's all I've got. Mike, go over you.
We've gotten out that we did not meet this month because of no business needing, as acted. There is a term expiring that's on the agenda to make an appointment for that.
Awesome. And then we also have Ms. Mary Luna Duffy with Parks is here. What, what, uh, what do you have for this evening?
Well, we did not, uh, meet this month either, and to what Jill had said earlier, we're here to, um, talk about some appointments. We have some people who are, their term expires this month, and then we also have an opening, um, for one of those positions, so we'll get into that here.
And then we got your, uh, end of the year report as well. We've, that council, do you have any questions or comments on that, or?
No, thank you for putting that together, though. That's extremely helpful.
Yes. Okay, thank you, guys. Uh, moving on from number six, on to number seven, the consent agenda. There's a lot in there. Does anybody have any questions, comments on it before we motion second?
I actually do. Um, so for GHIJ, the email that you had sent today about the length of the abatements, um, do we need to finalize the length of the abatements conversation? Or do we approve these operating off of that they are a three-year expectation?
Um.
Do you know what I mean?
These are, yes, I understand. Uh, they are actually five-year.
Five-year?
They are five-year.
Because of the way it was, okay. Gotcha.
But yeah, that's a good question. You can approve them or you can table to wait until January until we have more information.
Did everybody see the email I'm referring to, by the way? If you.
No, that just happened today.
We want to explain that quick, or is this the right time, or do you?
Um, I was going to explain it during other business, but I can certainly, yeah, I can do it now. Um, so we just kind of, um, we ran into something this week where we actually have a five-year residential abatement plan, uh, in place moving forward. And so I think.
Because of how it was set up.
Yes.
While back and what was actually filed and, and given to our bonding attorneys and sent to the state. Just.
Sent to the county.
Sent to the county, sorry, yeah.
And so, um, that's, you know, I've been kind of in contact with Justin this week and some other people who have called, and that's what it is. Um, so I just want to make you guys aware, whether you want to keep it five-year or because the intent was three-year, we can go through the process of changing it again. Um, Amy Jork with Dorsey did kind of say it's kind of, um, statutory. This is common, more so to have a five-year. But ultimately, it's up to you guys, um, what you want to do.
The, the miscommunication comes from when the original conversations were had a couple years ago when the room was in a different direction, but, um, it was, the verbalization of it was three-year, 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 three-year. Um, I'm not going to sit here and act like I have an explanation of why it was put as a five-year when it was set up as a three-year, and I didn't file those papers, um, and as we found out that maybe sometimes things didn't get filed correctly in the past. So it really is a different conversation, and as the email stated, from a budgeting standpoint, it kind of changes the thought process behind it, so. I'm in no way saying we're going to reject, these people all bought the houses, they filled out the forms. It's their abatement, that's not the point. The point is, it's another example of uncovering something that needs to be clarified. It's very similar to the situation with the industrial abatements that was never ended, but it was ended, but it wasn't, and then Amy didn't have any paperwork on it. So it's just something that I think we need to clean up. Um, I just wanted to, to call to the attention, if you hadn't seen the email from this afternoon, when we approve these, they are being approved for five years, and I know there are other folks in town whose abatements were ran for three years. And then they left after three years. It didn't go the full five years. I know because I was one of those people and numerous other newer people in town are those people. So we have to fix it moving forward, um, and if we approve these tonight, then we are approving these as five-year abatements, not three-year abatements, just FYI. And there is an impact to the budget when we start adding two additional years to these abatements, specifically at the speed in which the city is growing. So it was just, it'll be worth, I think, the new council having a conversation when we're more full with Angie and Brad here, probably hopefully in January, uh, about what is the intent of these? How do we want to use these going forward? And is a five-year tax abatement something that makes sense for Elkhart, so? If these four tonight are, they're, they're going under a five-year abatement, because that is how it was actually turned in and written. And why there's miscommunication, they don't work here anymore, so I can't ask them, so.
Yep, you covered it very well.
I just wanted to make sure that, yeah. FYI, I guess.
Traditional questions, comments, lot to digest, I know.
But before I, before we just went through the consent agenda, I wanted to call that out, so.
We have to be right for our residents to turn in the forms.
So motion to approve consent agenda, uh, in a roundabout way there. Second.
Uh, Four Acre.
Aye.
Edler.
Aye.
Schaefer is absent. Campbell is absent. Fordice.
Aye. Sorry.
Okay, uh, on to number eight, public hearing regarding text changes to the city of Elkhart zoning code.
We are just opening the hearing tonight. We are not reading the ordinance at all because we can't waive any readings with three members here, so. We want to open the public hearing.
Motion to second to open, open the public hearing.
Motion to open a public hearing regarding text changes to the city of Elkhart zoning code.
I second it.
Four Acre.
Aye.
Edler.
Aye.
Schaefer is absent. Campbell is absent. Fordice.
Aye.
Questions, comments, more context? I mean, we, we've already got it, we'll just.
It's just, um, correcting their scribe or whatever was put into the zoning code. It's just like some edits with the chapters, because they were the wrong chapters assigned with the wording, so.
It's, that's part of the codification project that was done and turned in, this just essentially, that was a draft version. This is the final version, if you will, correct?
Yes.
Correct. A new final.
This is the version you turn into yours each year.
Yes. We already turned it, but we had to edit it again, I guess, so. Questions from you guys, comments? Okay, motion to second to close room?
One last.
Any public comments?
Oh, sorry, yes, any public comments? I figured they'd have spoken up by now. They're usually pretty quick, so.
I was just going to make one, just, it's my intention to have upholding and, and modernization and correcting and keeping the codes and ordinances current moving forward versus having to throw out a wide net, catch several years and bring them all up. And you guys know that. You're doing a great job with it, but just throwing that out there, anytime we have code, codification or any of these ordinances or any of this stuff, it's the intent of this council and my, my intent personally to ensure that we're not playing catch-up again and trying to clean up multiple years' worth of stuff.
Questions, comments, anybody going once, going twice? Okay, council, close her up.
Motion to close public hearing.
Four Acre.
Aye.
Edler.
Aye.
Schaefer is absent. Campbell is absent. Fordice.
Aye.
At number nine, consider approval or denial of waiver of November penalty fees for 404 Northeast Madison Avenue, 406 Northeast Madison Avenue, and 402 Northeast Madison Avenue.
Did you see my memo regarding?
Yes, just pulling that up here. Basically, it was the payments, so the bill was not received, therefore was not known about, so therefore it was unpaid, so therefore here we are.
Yep.
Essentially is what it is. Council, comments, questions?
I'm fine with waiving the fees.
Me too.
Any more context needed?
What Katie suggested, it all makes sense to me. So motion to waive the November penalty fees or the four addresses listed?
Uh, three. Uh, three addresses.
Three addresses listed.
Three addresses, starts with a four, so it threw, threw me off too, so, I'm sorry, Jill, go ahead.
My second it.
Thank you. Four, Four Acre, there we go.
Hi.
Edler, Shaffer, Campbell, Fortice.
Uh, hi.
I was looking at you, but I needed to call his name out. Alrighty. Uh, on to number ten, planning and zoning board appointments.
This is for Mike's position, he has graciously offered to serve as president for another term.
Any other nominations?
It's, it's appointment as a member, not as soon as.
Member, yes.
As chair, that's chosen by board.
Counsel?
I mean, literally, anybody else, come on. I, I would love to have Mike serve and continue to assist the city and, um, I'd love to nominate Mike to. Rejoin the planning and zoning or approve his, whatever you want to say, application. Think I just need a second for that.
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, uh, for the appointment of Mr. Capples back on planning and zoning, we've got the motion, the second, or the term of five years, five-year term? Four Acre.
Hi.
Edler?
Hi.
Shaffer is absent, Campbell is absent, Fortice. I feel like I need to say it, it makes it more official.
I don't know if you do or not, actually, I was going to.
You can just go around and say hi.
Fine.
Eleven, uh, Parks and Rec Board appointments, we've got two. Technically for that, we've got one that Mary Luna has, Mary Luna Duffy, excuse me. And we've got, uh, Mary Luna Duffy has, uh, offered to run again, and I know we also have two other, um. Applications, council, do you have a chance to read over those?
I have. How many total spots are open then?
Just one, but Mary is, um, we are reappointing Mary to the. Her position.
So we're just filling Molly's.
Yes.
So there's, okay.
I butchered that, I apologize, completely screwed that up.
This is my own. Um. I'm not gonna ask, cause I don't know, but Steph is here, she's one of the applicants, if you wanted to, that's your meeting, I guess.
I, I'm going to abstain from any further comment, considering.
I got it.
Attendance, so.
So Steph has joined us tonight, Steph is one of the applicants, did, if you wanted to, I know you gave us a little bit of a. Um, a nice write-up, if you wanted to include anything since you're here and you decided to come tonight, we appreciate the fact that you're here when you're applying for one of these positions, so.
Yeah, um, no, I don't really have anything to add, I tried to summarize it best that I could in there, um, I think, you know. Regardless of who you appoint, um, me or the other one, um, I know him personally too, and, um. We both have something unique to offer, and I think Parks and Rec is gonna be a good pick for either one of us, so. Whatever you guys decide, whatever you feel like is gonna be the best fit for city moving forward.
Right, does anybody personally, anybody on the board or in the audience of Stephanie, did, do you know Mitchell Fisher personally? Does anybody know him personally? I just didn't recognize the name.
I, I know him in passing, he lives three houses up from us, so. And that's all I'll say otherwise, so.
And you meet the requirements you live within the city limits and all, and such and such. And you're fine attending the meetings as needed and helping set up times and all that.
Yes.
Cause the attendance at the meetings, I think, is something that, you know, can't be under, undersold, we need people there that want to be there, so. I turned the heater down as far as it could go, and it's still kicked on, so it must actually be really cold in here, but I can, we'll shut it off again, maybe you can let it run. Give it a few microphones, we can seal it, but otherwise.
It should, it should pick it up, I should have, just meant to speak louder, louder than the sound and louder than the lights.
Fair enough, the lights are loud, yes, uh, so I, I'm happy moving forward with Steph, Steph's at the meeting. Steph came, her write-up is very detailed, and I'm sure there'll be other opportunities for other people to serve in other capacities, so I. Nominate Stephanie Jenks to be appointed to the Parks.
Yep, I think it would be a good addition, and let's see what she can bring to the table.
Is that a second?
My second, I didn't know we were motioning that, I thought we were just giving our opinion.
I don't, I'm just gonna be safe.
Okay, yeah, my second.
I said you did have some.
Comments input from you, Mr. Four Acre?
Both, uh, both gave good explanations and any of what the.
Off then, the, I guess you gave the official in a roundabout way nomination. So approval of Stephanie Jenks to the Parks and Rec Board, Four Acre.
Hi.
Edler?
Hi.
For a term of five years, I'm sorry, I keep reading that part. Four Acre, Edler, Fortice.
Hi.
Welcome aboard.
And then Mary's.
Yes, uh, so then reappearance of Mary Luna Duffy to the Parks and Rec Board as well of the. Being the non-official but official president, since we can't officially make Mike president, but you, you know what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Motion to reappoint Mary Luna Duffy for a term of five years to Parks and Rec.
Get that one to Rob, I heard him first. Four Acre.
Hi.
Edler?
Hi.
Fortice. Welcome back and welcome aboard, welcome back. Uh, on to number twelve, resolution twenty twenty-four dash one oh nine, a resolution appointing the City of Elkhart. Representatives to the Des Moines, uh, Des Moines Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, or the NPO.
So this is just kind of a standard organization that's part of, and I did assign all staff to it. Uh, just because they do kind of have a lot of meetings, and they're all during the workday, so I made myself the main, uh, policy committee. Primary contact, Deb is gonna be the alternate for that committee, and then, um, because it's dealing with transportation. I made Ron Cornwell the primary contact for the technical committee, and then Rich is gonna be the alternate.
Everybody here okay? Those things aren't cloud, aren't they? Questions, comments?
Straightforward. From what I understand of the MPO, it just, it gives us a voice when the larger planning organization happens. And it's extremely important for us to have representation at those types of meetings, so I move to. For resolution twenty twenty-four dash one oh nine.
Second it.
Four Acre.
Hi.
Edler?
Hi.
Fortice.
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, number thirteen, resolution twenty twenty-four dash one one zero. A resolution to approve pay estimate number ten for work on the main lift station improvements projects under contract between. City of Elkhart and Ontrack Construction LLC.
Okay, Katie, here's my side, it's, so.
Yes, um, let me find. So the work done for this pay app, um. Duct tile iron piping for both the raw water and input lines has begun, uh, electrical and control wiring is about ninety-five percent complete. Electrical and control wire, wiring for new well number four is complete. The gas line, um, and the new generator are, um, complete. And then the startup of the gas heaters in the process room are all ready, and the painting, they're doing the painting of the interior walls. And door and exterior doors. For a total of one hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and four cents.
Counsel, questions, comments? We're used to these by now.
A motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash one ten.
Sorry.
Four Acre.
Hi.
Edler?
Hi.
Fortice.
That was for the water treatment.
Yeah, I see the total here.
So I.
Can we, can we pay that much for that one?
Yeah, I know, that was.
Be one eleven.
Yes.
I will read the lift station. Okay, the lift station was just for the fencing, very minimal, and it was two thousand, a hundred and sixteen dollars and thirteen.
Motion to approve resolution, do we just want to renumber it since we'd already did? Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash one eleven.
Second.
Four Acre.
Hi.
Edler?
Hi.
Fortice.
Hi.
Okay. So then, that was that, that was that, so now, now we're back on track, on to fifteen. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash one twelve, resolution approving pay estimate number five for the twenty twenty-three Prairie Point Park Improvements Project. Under contract between the City of Elkhart and Concrete Connections LLC.
That was just a bunch of words to get the lights on, it was the last item on the project.
We should make a video or something like that.
We should, oh wait.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash one twelve.
Second it.
Second. Four Acre.
Hi.
Edler?
Hi.
Fortice.
Hi.
There we go. Uh, number sixteen, resolution twenty twenty-four dash one one three, a resolution approving pay estimate number three. For the twenty twenty-three Prairie Point Park seeding project under contract between City of Elkhart and Emmons and Oliver Resources Incorporated.
That was for two visits to help with the native plants around the ponds, they landed those in their contract. Those between two and three visits a year to help get those established, because they take some time, so they have two more visits left scheduled for next year, um. I'll make sure I'm out here with them too, just to make sure everything's looking good, not that I know what all the, uh, plants look like. Make sure it's not just, just a bunch of weeds, and we don't let them off until we have some good native plants come.
Uh, rough estimate timeframe is when they, spring and fall, probably?
Probably spring and summer.
So that's something the DNR assists with, or even helps, so that they can identify the proper.
We could probably get Jennifer, the constructionist, to come out here, look, I mean, she was the one that wanted us to have the maintenance contract, so.
I wouldn't know what I was looking at either, so. Um, so that was number one, uh, motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash one twelve. One thirteen?
Yes, item number sixteen.
Yeah, I'm back on track.
I second it.
One thirteen, yeah.
Yes, uh, we, I think we're good, yes.
You get screwed up one time.
It, it happens, so we got motion, we got second, Jill, thank you so much, Four Acre.
Hi.
Edler?
Hi.
Fortice. Right. On to number seventeen. Uh, consideration to approve final acceptance of twenty twenty-three Prairie Point Park Improvements Project under contract between the City of Elkhart. And Concrete Connections LLC. Counsel, questions, comments? You know what to do.
My motion to approve final acceptance of twenty twenty-three Prairie Point Park Improvements Project under the contract. Between the City of Elkhart and Concrete Connection LLC.
Second. Four Acre.
Hi.
Edler?
Hi.
Fortice.
Hi.
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 Number eighteen, resolution twenty twenty-four dash one one four, resolution approving payment of retainage fee. To Concrete Connection LLC or Prairie Point Park Improvements Project.
Thirty-one days after tonight, so I'll hold on to it till then.
Questions, comments? Take it away.
My motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash one one four.
Second. Four Acre.
Hi.
Edler?
Hi.
Fortice.
Hi.
Hi.
Do you want to talk about the dock at all, while I'm here?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Can we interject?
Counsel, objections?
Two meeting.
I want, I want to make sure you guys are okay with it too, we're all a team.
No, I'd like to hear what you.
Right.
Could be a delay in game, finally, but. Go ahead, that's fine, I'll allow it.
Have you told them about the situation with the grant?
Yes, a little, a little bit, not in depth.
So we have fifty thousand dollars to use, hopeful that we can get it to use for the fishing pier, I think that's kind of the more realistic use of the money versus. Get a bridge built for fifty thousand dollars, so I've been looking into options, um, starting our company to see what people have done. Kind of ranged a lot, a lot of, when we've done, I've been like floating docks, which are gonna be more expensive than something, like if you just went down there and. Board a concrete dock that, you know, gets flooded when we have big rain events, be infrequent, but, um, be a little more cost-effective. And we were brainstorming today, and we were thinking, maybe we just go with one of those shoremaster docks that people have at their, you know, lake houses or, or something like that. Um, I haven't reached out to them or another company similar to that, but I just wanted to kind of get your opinions on whether that's something you'd be interested in doing. Uh, maybe get a contemporary type of thing where, you know, you have to have staff or have somebody come and set it out in the spring and take it off again in the. The fall, but, I mean, it might be the most bang for your buck, um, versus. Done something more permanent, so.
The items that were emailed, um, I have a concern that there were no railings, and. I would think that, uh, I mean, if we have issues with kids getting in the water now.
Yeah.
And that would be one thing that, for sure, I would want to talk to them about, is making it, you know, customized for this application where we know we're gonna have kids. And we want to make it ADA accessible and everything, um, so safety be a priority versus one that people are using at their lake house just for diving off of or anything like that. So it would be different, but kind of want to just explore that first, and so.
So. Kind of on the lines of that, number one, the safety of it is number one, you know, is the most important thing. Talked about putting, this, first, it's a grant, so it's not, it's money we can go get, in theory, which I know you, you and I talked about. Still gotta go secure it and make sure they're okay with it, because it's an amendment from the original bridge to nowhere, didn't get built. Um, so we'd have to make sure that they would consider that the same, and the funding would be in place, but if it was. It goes back to all of the same things we've talked about, whether it was the poop catchers or just the general park, there is no video cameras out there yet. There's no way to, nobody works out there full-time, there's no way to enforce what we're, we're doing, and then we're adding, we're saying, hey, stay off the ice. Stay off the water, and now here's a convenient way to do that, after we just told you just.
Rob your, your point, exactly, yep.
So ideas could range, and we would have to get approval from who's ever in charge of the grants, um, or it's usually horse grants. Someone would have to help us figure that out, but there's different thoughts of, maybe it's instead of a full fishing pier. Maybe it's a cutout like what, um, Big Creek has a couple where the dock just lines the water, and then there is some type of a railing that comes up. So you can just stand above the water for four or five feet, and it just comes off from the side, it could just probably be a concrete port. At that point, uh, and then there's the maintenance of it, we get the money to put it in, the cracks that falls in, it needs to be put in, it needs to be taken out. That's something that we're gonna need to budget for then, as small as that sounds, yeah, where are we gonna put it in the off-seasons? And I would just say, just because we have the ability to get the money from a grant, doesn't mean we have to. So I think it, it, we can go through a little bit of a planning process, but we're also spending money on the planning process, so it's really. Coming up with ideas, something that's cost-effective, and then realizing that it's fifty thousand dollar, we'll call it a freebie. But at the end of the day, it won't be, because it costs money every single year to upkeep and reinstall and take in and take out, so. I'm up for whatever park suggestions would be, different options, I'm up for looking into the REIT grants and the things and whatever, but I'm not. We don't have to do it if we don't want to, is kind of what I'm trying to say, so, but that's just my opinion.
Oh, yeah, too, that was a thought was, by doing that, we can eliminate, you know, engineering design and things like that, too.
Correct. Mr. Adams, you had a question or comment?
I was gonna try and make it to the park board, I haven't got a hold of Jill, but I do know where there is a bridge that the county. Has taken out, that we might be able to get a hold of, uh, farmer-owned deal. Might be able to get a hold of it into there, and it was on a gravel road, but I gotta know how long you're gonna need it, I gotta go measure the bridge, but. They picked it up at the TracO, raised eleven, twelve thousand pounds, but they had semi-crosses in it, so I don't think you're gonna get that many people on it. In there too, but I don't know how long it was gonna be, that's why I was gonna go to the park, find out what the length had to be, or where you're gonna put it, or what you're gonna do, but. The only thing you'd have to do is sandblast it and paint it, or into head walls.
We have the design done for it, so we know what it needed to be, I can't remember, I think it was a hundred feet.
It was pretty long.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, then the cost of pouring the footings and everything to hold the bridge, maybe there.
Yeah, but you're not, for that bridge.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sure.
He went a little froth line.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I was, I was saying more, not that we shouldn't or couldn't, more that maybe the REIT grant will cover that, is what I was saying, but.
Oh, it's a good idea.
I'll do some measuring.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, go give it Katie, let us know, please.
Uh, my college residents, uh, spent some time at AAID, and they have a fishing, it's not necessarily a pier, but it's right on the edge of the water.
It's not necessarily a pier, but it's right on the edge of the water. Kind of like you talked about, they built a nice railings to keep people from off of it. Um, with the issues we're already having, I feel even if we put a railing out there, make it ADA compliant or have a railing for kids. It's going to be one of those things unless they can't physically get over it or can't climb over it. I'm already in the middle of the lake, the lake's gonna, the pond's going to be more frozen here. I'm just going to go under this barricade as well. If it's on the edge of the water. And it's just a railing, like our ponds aren't big enough. You're going to, you're not going to get that big of a difference in fish if you're. Twenty foot that way versus, versus the edge. And then you also don't have to worry about the water lines going up and down. If it's on the, on the edge of it as much. Just a.
No, all feedback appreciated, absolutely.
Can we add security cameras to it? Cause it kind of sounds like we have. Uh, sort of three options here. One is a bridge from the county. Uh, that was identified tonight. The other one was, um, the bridge that you had shared. The dock, essentially that you had shared and then the concrete pad, right? Are those the three options that we kind of have identified here?
Or the, just the shoreline.
Or, or the shoreline.
Whatever you want to call that.
Yeah, deck if you will, or lack of better term.
Deck dock.
Overhang.
Yeah.
Something along those lines.
And then recognizing what you had said about the security cameras here. Is there a way to also put that in or, or can we only take away? The bridge or one or the other and not adding anything new, I guess.
I mean, she wouldn't really say for certain. What we could or couldn't do. I can always try and see if. You know, we can have a case for this is for safety reasons and I can make it about that.
Mm-hmm.
But.
Maybe we tie it because if we are truly talking about ADA compliance. There might be something in the ADA compliance stuff about having a camera potentially or, or some type of extra safety measure in place since there isn't and. Just a thought. That would provide an extra layer of safety. And if we could rope it into that.
Okay, yeah.
It's going to have to go to their board, so she can answer her question or she can answer her question.
Yeah.
With certainty.
Uh, the intention's good. That's what I'm saying is that if we're doing it, not just, hey, let's use the REAP grant to get free video. No, that's not what we're talking about. Talking about building it in and making it safe, so.
Yeah.
But I, I wouldn't personally be in favor of spending the money, even though it's not ours in this case. Putting something in if we don't have a way to protect the people that are using it and they have cameras and things like that, so. It's kind of a nonstarter for me, but that's, I'm just one.
I guess the big question goes back, obviously, we're not deciding anything now. We're just. Kind of a awkward open discussion if not in the middle of everything here, but we'll get back on track in a second, but. Two points well done. One, do we need it slash want it? And two, if that's a yes, then. Where and what option? And now if, if it is the former county bridge, what's our timeline looking like on that? Just the questions that. I would say that go back to part four, discuss that, have, have the initial discussion, then obviously we'd come back through council and everything, but just. You know, council input as well, get the parks and all that. And any feedback you guys have, any further feedback, get with Mary and that's it. We go from there and leave it here for now, so.
Do you know when it needs to be decided by?
She said the end of the year, but she also left it kind of open ended.
End of this year?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, no pressure.
Yeah, so. So I'll, I'll see if she can work with us and. Explain to her what's happening. Cause it sounds like, you know, it's too, it's too close in time anyways.
Yeah.
There will always be other REAP grants. There will always be other opportunities. I'm not trying to take. Anything away from parks or funding. If this is something you guys have planned on, that's different. I don't want to overstep, but I feel like there'll be other opportunities if we want to do it down there too.
Okay. Well, call that interjection closed for now.
Did you get what you needed?
I think we'll, I'll, I'll work with you and DNR and.
Sorry.
I'll keep looking for your office.
Yeah.
Could we, any information we could get? From you or the county about said bridge, dimensions, length, pictures, whatever.
How to go measure.
Okay.
It's already out.
Gotcha.
County don't know. Oh, so it's an old county bridge. Understood. So.
Yeah, cool deal. Thanks, sir.
Yeah, and then I was just going to add it from being K, we could get your opinions on maintenance and design cost and. Which one we can get the best thing for our best worker and that, yeah.
Let's, let's carry on.
Thank you.
Thank you guys all very much, yes. Uh, number nineteen, acceptance of proposal to perform annual examination of city finances for the fiscal year twenty twenty four.
We're required to do this every year based on our population. And our. Finances. So we actually received three proposals from the three that we mailed out. Um, Grunwald, they have been doing our annual exam for years. So they're very familiar with our finances and they came in with the lowest bid. That's what I did request or, um, recommend approving.
Counsel questions, comments?
Just be careful moving forward with them.
I've, I've worked with them in the past eighteen months, cleaning up some various stuff before. These two fine young ladies came aboard and they're, they're fantastic and we're always willing to answer questions and provide us with the information we needed. So I have, I have faith in Grunwald.
If it ain't broke, no fix it, so to speak.
Yeah, it'll be nice when we. So to speak, get these and then we actually get to see them too. That'll be cool.
Yeah.
So. They get presented to us.
They do.
Yeah.
Cool. If you guys got nothing else, you know what to do.
Sorry.
Uh, motion to accept a proposal for manual examination of city finances for fiscal year twenty twenty four by Grunwald.
I second it.
What do you say, Grunwald Bell and Kin?
Kin.
I have a really good.
Yeah.
GBK?
GBK.
I can work with it. The second?
I second.
I didn't hear you. I'm so sorry.
Next, Rob seconded it or Katie, sorry.
Rob and then Jill. So then Four Acre. Adler.
Hi.
Fordice.
Hi.
Okay. Uh, to number twenty. Resolution twenty twenty four dash one one five, a resolution to set city clerk wage.
So, um, yeah, we held, um, Deb's review. Was it last week or the week before?
I heard it was terrible.
I am very happy with her performance and having her on our team. She has been. Excellent since she arrived here in May and I can't imagine working here without her. Um, she not only works hard, but she really implements new ideas, always wants to improve things, which I really appreciate. Um, and she's a good sounding board as well for all of us, so. I am recommending her salary increase, um, based on her employment contract. Um. In December, she is eligible for a twenty five hundred salary increase or increase to her salary. Um, and then I did make a note in here. Um. We offer our employees a seventy five dollar cell phone stipend per month. The state auditor actually came back in our reaudit report and said that they justify that as an unreasonable expense for a city clerk. So upon hearing that, Deb refused to accept, um, you know, cell phone stipends moving forward, which is understandable. Uh, so I did add the nine hundred dollar for the annually to cover that amount. Because I feel like that is fair. As all of our employees are receiving that per month, um, it would not have her. Uh, pension tied to it as well, just like a regular cell phone stipend. Did you have a question?
I just had a question. Um, so if the state or the auditor, whoever said that we shouldn't be doing it, why are we? Why are we like trying to find a way around it? I just feel like, I mean, the city has the phones and things like that. And shouldn't need to use their personal cell phone. I don't think anybody like Ron and Rick, obviously they, they do more than like. The ladies in the office and, and I just feel like maybe that's. That's personally my thought.
I can help with being involved with the audit too. So number one, it was their opinion that. Um, it met the statute of an unreasonable expense. Deb is the only city clerk within a nuclear blast radius of the Des Moines metro that is now not getting a cell phone reimbursement. So. She chose not to, the council, we never voted to remove it. So she chose not to take it. Every other city clerk that I'm aware of that we spoke with when Katie reached out is still taking set stipends. So it was an opinion of the state auditor. It wasn't a mandate. It wasn't something they said, you have to quit doing this or we feel like you shouldn't or you're in trouble. Uh, the second part of it is, this isn't. This isn't trying to get around it. What it's saying is, is when Deb was hired, number one, the twenty five hundred dollar wage increase was part of her contract. It was.
Right, yes, no, I agree with that, yes.
So the seventy five dollar a month cell phone reimbursement is what's considered a taxable fringe benefit, correct? I believe that's the proper terminology for it. And in her removing it and us giving it to her in a different way, we're not giving it directly to her, we're just applying it to her salary. Because it was part of what she had expected to earn when she came here. But in taking the state auditor's advice, what we would have to decide is. Does she deserve an extra nine hundred dollar a year raise, um? Or not? And if we decide not, it has nothing to do with her cell phone anymore. So what this turns into is. Do we feel that she deserves an extra nine hundred dollars above the twenty five hundred that she was, um, I won't say guaranteed, but what was written into the employment contract? So that's really the question. So it's not trying to circumvent anything. It's. Do we want to give her what she had planned to receive when she started? Um, or not? And if we don't. That's your prerogative. Um. I won't speak for Deb in this situation, but. You know.
So I, my other question is, is if the, if the auditor, if all the other cities are getting it, why is it a big deal that we were getting it?
I have political opinions on that answer, but I will not. I'm going to keep them to myself at this point. I think sometimes when people. Go looking for something, it's better if they find something than if they don't. And since they didn't find anything and they wanted to find something and I'm going to stop talking now.
I don't have a problem with the giving her the extra nine hundred dollars because that's what she expected to get when she was hired. But I don't necessarily want to connect it to the cell phone. Uh, maybe that's ridiculous, but.
That's what this breaks. This breaks the, this settles the tide.
Then I misunderstood, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
If this is an additional incremental raise and then moving forward, there are no future twenty five hundred dollar jumps or X amount of dollar jumps. Deb would then be subject to the employment review process and the annual wage increases that she would be eligible for. So this is the last of those. It's very similar to what Katie's. Employment agreement was written as well. So this has. Nothing to do with the cell phone. Other than that, it meets an expectation that Deb had from an income standpoint when she took the job.
Okay.
So. That's my answer. Sorry for the long windedness, but being involved with all of that stuff plus Deb plus, yeah. I felt context was important and ultimately it's up to you guys and what do you think?
Very good question, very valid, valid points to give. Rob?
Motion to approve, uh, resolution twenty twenty four dash one fifteen.
Second. Okay. Yeah, sorry. I knew what to do. I was just like, I'm missing something. Uh, Four Acre.
Hi.
Adler.
Hi.
Fordice.
Hi.
There we go. Uh, the number twenty one, resolution twenty twenty four dash one one six, a resolution to waive the city of Elkhart's right to review. A subdivision located within two miles of Elkhart city limits. This would be Goodrich Springs, that's their final class.
You guys waived this preliminary plat back in March, so this is another step. So mo- moving forward, I will make sure that we do not waive the preliminary plat, we'll just wait till the final.
Okay.
So I apologize for adding that to your plate.
Any questions, comments?
Do we still need to waive it then?
Yeah.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash one one six.
I second it.
Acre.
Hi.
Adler.
Hi.
Fordice.
Hi.
Onto number. Twenty two. Uh. Yes, twenty two, resolution twenty twenty four dash one one seven. A resolution approving the permeable paver cleaning bid for Main Street pavers.
Okay. So. There are not a lot of these services in Iowa, I found out. Um. We received a bid to clean the Main Street permeable, permeable pavers. Um, it's broken out into two projects. The first project. Is to basically clean all the debris out and he gave a bid for three thousand dollars not to exceed. And then he said we would start out with doing that and then. If we need more rock chips. That once they're done cleaning them out, then his second bid was five thousand dollars not to exceed. So we're not for certain if we need more rock chips, but that, he included it in the quote.
Is it three plus five or is it five if we need the rocks, three if we don't? Just to be clear.
I believe it was three plus, what was the second one?
Yeah. The resolution is written.
I misread that.
Okay, just, I was just clarifying, okay?
And when you approve it, you can say that in the morning.
This goes back to when the initial Main Street plan was done and these things were installed. This is. A forward thinking thing that would have been great to put in and begin to budget for. You've seen what they look like. They're full of stuff that they're not supposed to be sand specifically in some areas, rocks and dirt and debris and others. In order for us to maintain good graces with the DNR and accomplish the goal of putting the permeable pavers in place, which I believe is still on display over by the. Post office, we have to do this. Um, this is something that needs to be done. It's not an emergence need. I don't. Know if they suggested doing it in the winter, but the way I understand it is we wait till spring, once we were done applying sand and salt and everything, or whatever we applying down in the fifty fifties. But it needs to be done sooner than later, um, to get caught back up. And then moving forward, was it yearly correct that they recommended or was it every two years?
I think it was every two or three.
Every two. But it's something we would need to budget for moving forward. And we can find funding sources for it and different things, so.
A couple of things I've got here, I believe it's not to, would be not to exceed eight, the way I'm reading the memo that you had sent out.
Yes.
So it's, 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 so it is a five plus three or a three plus five at that point. Um, just wanted to make sure I brought that to your guys' attention. So would, it would be, uh, if we approve it, move forward with it. Uh, it'd be not to exceed an eight thousand total, three thousand for the first part, five thousand for the secondary part. Um. Second on with that, reading through the, the.
Okay.
The stuff that you had sent along with it, the, the memos and the, the maintenance quotes and the. Educational pieces that you had sent Katie along with as well. Um. I guess we would need to get with one, uh, public works and. Be careful with what we are spreading going down Main Street, because I know we had done a sand salt mix this time. And if we're not supposed to be putting sand in here, that would not be a good thing to go and spread down Main Street. Even if it is frozen outside, um, that, that would then filter down in.
Yeah. Specifically after they're cleaned. Moving forward and then we need to have conversations about.
Properties along, along Main Street that have sand on them. I phrase it as such, so. Uh, making sure we've got a plan to corral said sand or prevent or clean or what have you, so.
We had talked in the past before y'all were, um, when I brought this up a while back. It was talking with anybody who makes an impact to it, local businesses specifically, there's, there's a few, right? That could contribute to it. Helping defray the cost of the maintenance, prorating out amount of space, you get the point. So if, if businesses contribute to it in a distinct way, or, or we decide that. You know, there's too much sand coming from one area, it would just be us asking for contribution towards the five thousand dollars, whatever it was. Um, and a prorated amount would be one suggestion. To help the city defer the cost because we're not putting the sand there, if that makes sense. So. And as, as far as what's going down in the winter and all that, that's, that's a good catch. That is something, again, we had discussed in the past. I think it would just, you know, we looked at. Yep, it's been a while since it was brought up, so.
Yeah, I stopped Ron when he was spreading on Saturday and talked with him for a few moments and then went through and read this Sunday night and I went, oh.
Yeah.
Whoops, that makes more sense now, so.
Yep, because replacing these things would be. Wouldn't be on budget. Anytime soon.
And obviously the asking for. Offset or proration of the cost is not something we could demand or implement, but it's, it's, you don't know if you don't ask and, and we approach it from there. So not something we would consider along with. Going with this with clean, breach of cleanings and whatnot, but just. A conversation to have when the time comes up, so. Yeah, it may be, so.
Um, the, the secondary option and. Sorry, I didn't bring myself out of that. The secondary option is purchasing the equipment ourselves and learning how to use it. Uh, over the course of time, that is not out of the question, but in the short term, it's. A lot more than three to five thousand dollars, so. Maybe with a third full-time staff and the proper equipment, it's, it's essentially a giant power washer with a giant vacuum. That sorts everything out. It's a pretty cool machine, but they're not free. So, and they're rare, as you just mentioned. Yeah. Not a lot of cities have the permeable favors. Thank you both.
Counsel, any additional questions, comments, thoughts?
Nope.
Ideas? Anybody got a little toothpick? We can go out there and start cleaning them.
Yeah, any time. Nope.
Motion to approve.
No, I, I, if that's where we're at, I'm fine with it.
Motion to approve, no, I was going to say to approve you to go out with a toothpick.
Oh. That's not on the agenda.
Order, order. Resolution, motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash one one seven.
Second. Not to exceed.
Eight thousand dollars.
Eight thousand dollars.
That was written in, but yeah, it's not to exceed.
Wanna make sure it's official and whatnot, so. Thank you very much, Four Acre?
Aye.
Adler?
Aye.
Fordice? AJ, what are you doing next weekend?
Christmas shopping.
Okay. Onto number twenty-three, Resolution twenty-two-four dash one-eighteen, a resolution approving community center rental agreement policy.
Okay, so the only change that I made from last meeting is adding the decibel level. Um, or the noise. Um, I added volumes shall not exceed eighty decibels. So, I received, I got that number, I kind of looked at Mont grant and Volt County's ordinance a little bit. Um, normal talking, decibel is about sixty-five.
But also the gap between the stadium full of screaming people is, that's like a hundred, so eighty is not, eighty is pretty reasonable, but.
No, I meant that was reasonable.
Yeah, yeah.
The sixty-five, I just didn't think that sixty-five was.
It allows for music and used to be played, but not, you know, overly excessive, but it also allows, if somebody does have a complaint that lives around here, there's houses everywhere, that it allows Volt County sheriffs to have an enforceable.
No, I think I'm okay with it, I'm happy with the outcome of, you know, how the rental agreements turned out, and I think it moved forward with it.
It's always revisitable in the future as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-four dash one-eighteen.
My second.
Four Acre?
Aye.
Adler?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Excuse me, onto number twenty-four, Resolution twenty-two-four dash one-one-nine, a resolution approving town cloud agenda subscription.
This is our new platform we use to send out.
Amazing.
It is very exciting. And it has a minutes feature to it, so tomorrow when Deb writes the minutes, she can just go right in, and it's very efficient. Um, so the monthly fee is fifty dollars, we're gonna just share an account. Um, but yeah, we're really excited and we really recommend the service, so.
It's fairly decent.
Way better than scrolling through a hundred and thirty pages.
Yes.
Yeah, the email attachments.
Yeah.
It's a lot, it's way easier to find stuff.
Yeah.
I think it's in line with what you talked about a year ago, wanting to increase visibility and communication. I mean, the ability to go, um, on the website right now and pull up the agenda and have everything hyperlinked for each item with every single PDF that's needed for every single citizen to take a look at, all the pay orders are there to review, as opposed to, uh, sometimes one hundred and seventy-eight page non-circual document scanned in. I think it's a, it's a wise investment, as long as you feel that it fits within the budget, you know, what you need to use, I'm, I'm good for.
I, I, I'm still serious, take it out of my monthly meeting pay if need to.
Is it this thing that I have on my?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's changed, it's changed the way we do this, and it's provided unlimited utility.
I mean, if, if you haven't had a chance to, to look it up or take a peek at it with the agenda online, it, take a look at it. It is, it's much more streamlined, it's much more user-friendly, it's pretty awesome.
Maybe for like a meeting, just to scroll through and like press when you wanna pull up.
Frankly, the amount of time that it saves them to do it allows them to do things that are, yeah, valuable.
Yes, yes.
So motion to approve, I think I've done four in a row, motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-four dash one-nineteen.
My second.
Why's it different talking last, uh, Four Acre?
Adler?
Aye.
Fordice?
Dirty job.
Resolution twenty-two-four dash one-two-zero, item twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the city clerk to utilize electronic payments for certain monthly invoices, not all, but certain.
So right now, um, I pay Mid-American, Wellmark, just different vendors that, um, I have, I go on their website and just pay. It's just you giving me permission to do that, and you're still going to receive copies of those to sign you in Haiti, so. It really, the only difference is the state to be more official here.
It threw me off the first time, cuz there were like three checks and like this much paperwork, and I was like, oh crap. So, no, I, I, it's much more efficient, and then we can, we're able to hold, uh, those funds in the accounts longer and hopefully gain interest and.
One of our audit comments was that we pay things, and sometimes with the timing, when the meeting is, to when it's doing, they weren't getting there, so. This is my.
Yeah, it's literally hand- driven checks to places, yes.
Yeah. So we all still see the invoices or, or the supporting documents. Make me more special.
Yeah, and on, and on that, that touch, if we've got something that has to go out next day or something urgent, I have no issue stopping by in the evening and taking care of it right away for you guys, so. Un, unrelated but related to this, so, um, counsel, questions, comments on it?
Motion to approve, uh, Resolution twenty-two-four dash one-twenty, resolution authorizing the city clerk to utilize electronic payments.
No.
My second.
There you go.
Half the time we don't read the whole sentence, half the time we do.
I know, we keep, and it's fine. All right, Four Acre?
Aye.
Adler?
Aye.
Fordice? Keep on keeping on. Number twenty-six, special event policy. Uh, so we went through this last month, um, I'll say we learned some things, um, we've changed some things, we've grown and we've adapted and whatnot, grown is not the right word, but, um, did you guys get a chance to go back through, read the memo with the updates, with the changes, with the this, the that? Okay. Um, what I'd like to do really quick, if you guys have the ability to pull it up, um, take a peek at it here.
Do we need to open a public hearing, or are we just discussing?
It's not a zoning ordinance.
Okay, just making sure before we got too far.
Cannot pass it, that's.
Correct.
Yeah.
The memo that wrote.
Uh, the, the whole, the whole deal, the, uh, maybe the ordinance itself, special event ordinance.
Correct.
I'm not gonna take a whole lot of time on it, um, I do know, uh, Mr. Boggs had been, he had a lot of the questions, comments, and whatnot, feedback at last meeting. Um, he's been in touch with Katie with a lot of things, uh, I had some feedback, we made some changes, uh, Katie and I did. I don't know, counsel, what you guys had or hadn't contributed, or, uh, but a lot of changes had been made to this, so, um, as we go through, um, I'm just gonna read off the section numbers and just, if you guys have any questions on it, I'm not gonna read through with the each section number, the ordinance is available if anybody needs a copy, wants a copy, but, uh, for the purpose of an intent, uh, one-nineteen dot O two, if you guys have any questions on that.
Nope.
It's basically this ordinance is geared at primarily events that require street closures, is the nuts and bolts on it. If there's anything special events in town that, um, be it meme machine, be it kitties, be it hen house, if they require a event clo- a road closure for their event, this is primarily what this ordinance is, is geared towards. Uh, would also cover, uh, private events, citizen events, block parties, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I just, I list the big three because they're the ones who have had those events of the past, ECBC as well, so. Um, the definitions, uh, one-nineteen dot O three, any questions in there?
No.
The definitions of the different terms and public property, special event, et cetera. Oh, and if anybody out here has got any questions or comments as well, we can take those as we go. Uh, any questions on point O four for the application and when a permit is required? How about point O five, application requirements? Point O six, the permit review process, how it's gonna be processed, the timeline, the need, the, uh, permit application needs to be submitted, how long, et cetera, any questions on that?
Nope.
And again, this is just the first reading of this, we're not passing it tonight, we're gonna have two more readings of it, definitely. Uh, and if you here tonight are watching the recording back, if you guys have any questions, you need a copy of this ordinance, you're more than welcome to reach out, request it, it's in the, uh, the agenda here tonight, it's in the council packet, you're welcome to look it up, reach out to City Hall with any questions you might have on it. Uh, insurance required, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, questions, comments?
Nope.
Point O nine, the decision by city council. Point one O, uh, the appeal procedure. And then I just, I actually just caught a boo-boo here, Katie, uh, we've got two, one-nineteen point one Os. There's the appeal procedure and then the permit replication.
Yep, so it needs to be eleven.
Yep.
Yeah, you're off there.
Yeah, exactly, so as, as written right now, continuing on, uh, one-nineteen point one-one for violations. Just keep going through, uh, stop me if you've got something, penalties, exemptions, point one-three.
No.
It's, it's skimmed down, uh, simplified from the initial version. Um, took some things out, added some more defining verbiage to help. It wasn't overly confusing, but it was confusing at the first one, so I wanted to simplify it a little bit, so. Now, if you guys don't have any questions, I mean, so what was motion, second to approve the first reading, would that be correct?
I think it's correct.
You can approve all the first reading.
Yeah, obviously, yeah, the approved approval of the first reading without the, not the whole thing, so. If you guys don't have anything, you're more than welcome to take it away when, whenever.
Yeah, I think you would, our conversations and conversation last month, and going over what Katie's covered, as long as the intent is to find something that works for everybody, that allows events to take place, but also offers protection to the citizens, I think this is pretty comprehensive, and hopefully all the interested parties will take the time to review, it sounds like they are, and find a good resolution, but again, it's similar to what we just talked about, it's a living, breathing thing, we can amend it as time goes on, we can find that there needs to be more, there needs to be less. There's been some suggestions of mandated police enforcement and different things, there's, there's some verbiage of that in there as well, that I know other people have questions on, so I believe we're gonna not discuss it in January, was that, did we wanna talk?
I, I had considered doing that, just for the reason, I know Katie, uh, you won't, you won't be here unfortunately for that meeting. Uh, I'd like you here in present to field any questions, answer any questions that we couldn't, uh, answer or take in our, so.
So the next time this would appear on the agenda then, would likely be February?
Counsel, do you have any issues with that, or?
So that puts us at March, April for approval, depending on how all those readings go, and things, just everybody's aware, because events are gonna start coming up as soon as we approve it, most likely, so.
Yeah, and then we'll take into consideration any events that may or may not come up beforehand and, and go from there, so.
And we've got some special meetings where if we need to stick it on.
Great point.
Yep, yep.
Right, we're gonna cover that in a minute.
So, if we're good to go, uh, you still need a motion, a second to approve the first reading, correct?
And roll call, yeah.
Yes.
Motion to approve the first reading. Of the ordinance amending the code of.
Is there a niner in?
Ordinance number twenty-two-four twelve, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Elkhart, Iowa, by adding chapter one, one-niner, special events.
Thank you.
My second.
Goodness gracious. Four Acre?
Aye.
Adler?
Aye.
And?
Fordice?
Again, any questions, any comments moving forward, please reach out to City Hall, shoot us an email, and we can be happy to cover anything for you, so. On to number twenty-seven, Resolution twenty-two-four dash one-two-two, a resolution approving annual contract with G-Works for simple city software.
Yeah, this is just, we have to do this for our G-Works, that is a pretty detailed contract, we saw that. So that's what that is, and we will, um, use G-Works hopefully at least through the middle of the year, because it will be a project, big project switching.
So that's the question, is, um, obviously, we want, you need software, I'm in favor of approving it cuz we need to run a city. But also, I would like to do it with, uh, just an agreement that you're looking into other options, you're attending a workshop, it sounds like, to learn more about other options and modernize.
Ideally, we go through this fiscal year with G-Works, get our audit out of the way early, not late, and then switch.
Okay.
I would, I would really be nice if we could have the audit done too, by the, before we fully switch.
And we're gonna have quotes for that pretty soon, correct?
Well, we can.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, I don't know if I missed anything, there's, I know there's several documents attached here, is there any, uh, penalty for canceling early, or? I mean, I, I know we wanna switch, and I, I want us to switch.
Hey, we have to give them a notice, and I believe it was a penalty, but we won't get a refund.
We're allowed though to begin to offload and use other software and just scale back the usage, correct, as we went?
Well.
Can you make the transition without actually terminating the contract and just letting it lapse? I.e. have two softwares running in parallel, just not using one?
Possibly, I mean, anything after June thirty, yes, would be like, fine to do that, cuz you'd be nice to have.
That's what I mean, this is, then we just, we have it, but we phase it out, and that way it's there through the end of the year to answer any questions or clean up anything.
And for the audit.
And for the audit. And our review.
Yeah.
Exeign, sorry.
This side of the table, questions, comments?
Nope.
Well, take it away.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-four dash one-twenty-two.
Second.
Four Acre?
Aye.
Adler?
Aye.
Shaker is absent, Campbell is absent, Fordice?
Aye. Still.
All right, onto number twenty-eight, code enforcement, this has been a subject we've not talked a whole lot about at all in the last several months, I say with heavy sarcasm. Who wants to start this one, or bring up comments, or?
I just added it to the agenda to spark the conference, to make it visible to the public, I know we had mentioned putting it on all of our agendas moving forward, so that people are aware.
I asked for it to be on the agenda, you put it there, I appreciate that. We talked about beginning a six-month education series of, welcome to Elkhart, here are the things that we all have to abide by, cuz we're in a community, whether we like them or not, series, if you will, you call something a little catchier.
We might need to work on the title.
Yeah, that's a terrible title, uh, but, but the goal is to, Brad's phrase that I will repeat again, is enforcement through education versus, so last time we did code enforcement, the pushback we got, now, we had ninety-two plus percent of the issues were taken care of by the community members who received the violation letters, but the feedback was, it's a small town, it's cold to just get a letter being told that you're a nuisance and all that, totally agree. So what we wanna do is we wanna spend, now, code enforcement is still happening, code enforcement is just, it's spotty for what it is right now because of the ability to enforce, but this isn't saying, well, we're not doing any code enforcement for the next six months, this is saying, we're giving you notice that within the next six months, we are building a structure to begin to enforce the codes up to the standard that the council and the citizens are asking for, and over the next six months, you're being duly noted that here's what we're gonna focus on, and whether we want Katie and, and the staff to, maybe it's every week to put up a new, like, hey, here's a code that you might not have known about, did you know it's against code to park on grass surfaces? Did you know it's against code to live in a camper next to a building? Did you start pointing it out and then reference the code, why it's a code, and then begin to have discussions around that? Now, it doesn't mean we need to engage in a million back and forth on Facebook and public conversations. They're going to be, as Johnny mentioned, encouraged to reach out directly to city council, or I'd like to include a council member if they have questions about that. Um, this isn't a tattletale system of, we're gonna drive around and take pictures and post it on Facebook and be like, this is a code violator, don't do this. No, this is more, uh, targeted to the things that we see as a nuisance as a city, as you guys see as a nuisance as a city, and what you're hearing from people, and the things that actually need to be focused on. So we have a six-month window to do as much education as we can, so that on July first, hypothetically, when code enforcement starts, we're gonna get as few people coming back and saying, I didn't know, or I, I, I wasn't aware, or whatever. So this, this will be front and center, it will require some attention and some time. Um, but that's, that's what this is, and that's why, so, you know, we can keep putting this on the agenda, and then any, obviously, it's up your meeting, public comments as well, any feedback you guys have on this. Um, it's not meant to be a nuisance, it's meant to do, bring attention to something that we should have always been putting attention.
Counsel, any additional inputs, comments?
Nope.
So, it's just, to summarize what Brad said, just to catch up on things, to bring the structure back to not just have things hot-podge and make sure that the city is nice and tidy and cleaned up and all that good stuff, so.
It also gives us six months to come up with a plan, how do we wanna enforce it? We, we talked about, we're gonna, budget season's coming up, do we wanna hire an outside firm for the first year? Do we wanna officially start enforcing it, if so, on what date? And what does that enforcement structure look like? Is it the outsourcing, is it insourcing? And if we insource it, who's gonna do it? Are they willing to do it? Do we, you get the point? That is another, that is another thing that we have a ticking window on, is we build the budget the next couple of months, we need to have an idea of what we're gonna do starting on July one and how we're gonna pay for it, so.
And counsel, I would encourage you and you and you who are not here, but hypothetically, and, uh, I hear, uh, if you guys have comments, if you see things, if you've got an idea of what the, what the featured ordinance should be for this month, this week, what have you, or maybe we do it every other week or something like that, uh, reach out to me, reach out to Katie, and if you've got. me, reach out to Katie, and if you've got an idea of a phrase or something to put along with it, uh, something that you've seen that we wanna bring attention to, please, uh, bring it up and, and, uh, we'll get ball rolling on that, so, uh, and if you need any help from council or what have you, please reach out to them as well, that whatever we can do to, uh, like you said in the beginning of your little spiel there, we, we don't wanna slap you with a, with a fine, uh, or with a notification, but we want to get you, anything that we do notice that's going on in town, just, hey, this is what's going on, we see it, nothing's going on right now, nobody's in trouble, but, hey, this is a deal that we need to start working on, so. Any public comments, questions, concerns?
Avenue's a media, are you looking at doing that through?
I'm sorry, sir.
What avenues of media, like Facebook, are you gonna put it in the mailers, cuz a lot of, some people don't have Facebook.
We talked about a mail, like a mailer.
Yeah.
Same thing with the water bill, but I don't know, there's not a lot to read on the water bill.
Yeah, I know, there's limited character space on there, we, we could probably do some sort of mailer, um, keep it short, sweet and simple for, for cost-wise and, and for postage and that whatnot, but, um, I mean, it would, it would be on all socials, of course, um, maybe I'll do something, or if council wants to do something a little short or clip or whatever, and we put it out on YouTube, it would, any and everywhere that it can be, uh, we'll try to do something physical as well for exactly your point, for those who don't have the socials, who don't go online as their first source or whatnot, so, um.
Town crier, agent, just stand on the corner and ring a bell.
Yeah.
The code enforcement is.
Code talk, code talk of the week. I know you've got a sign and a safety vest that's collecting dust after Halloween, so. Now, if there's no other questions, comments, we'll consider twenty eight closed and move up, move forward. To twenty nine, presentation of fiscal year twenty twenty six budget schedule.
Okay, so, I did send out a revised, um, budget schedule because I messed up and scheduled to be gone during the January meeting, the January regular meeting, so I sincerely apologize for that, um, I will not be here January twenty first. Um, I scheduled our first preliminary budget meeting on January twenty seventh, um, that is a Monday, and then, um, the second budget session will be February eighteenth after our regular meeting. PFM, our financial advisor, um, plans to come February eighteenth to go through our financial models with us. Um, and then, because of the new, the public hearing requirements, we have to set another special meeting in March, um, in order to approve our property tax hearing, or approve our property tax rate, so, um, we will have two special meetings in one night, just like we did last year, um, fifteen minutes apart, so. Um, do, any of those dates not work for you guys?
Should be fine for me.
Okay. I figured we would, um, hold them in here, um, and unless you guys suggest meeting at City Hall, we can do that too, I know it just gets kind of cramped in there, people come from the public.
Do we need to set those meeting dates tonight?
Um, I'd like a motion in a second, just so we have clarification.
For each date, or blanket approval?
Uh, you can blanket, like, in your, um, approval, you can put.
As submitted.
Yes.
Yeah. I don't have any issue with any of those dates, as long as we have, I think they're all important, so don't take this out of context, but the CIP review and budget workshop, and then meeting with Matt and going through the financial models, that's where we talk about how we're going to set taxes and not razor rate, you get the point, those, those are extremely important for everyone to attend. Um, so if we wanna set the dates tonight, because I, we kinda have to, um, we don't have another meeting really before that to do it, other than the actual council meeting, but that's cutting it way too close with all the requirements, do we have any indication from Brad or Angie is what I was?
I have not received anything.
So, I think we're gonna have to schedule them based off of the availability of the four people sitting in here, and we'll work, we'll work on good faith that they plan to attend as many of them as they can.
We don't have anything going on on Tuesdays, the first two months of the year, cuz Lord knows I don't remember, so, she, she, she tells me.
It's, yeah, just to reiterate that.
The twenty-seventh is a Monday.
Yeah, Monday.
I, 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 sorry, I said Tuesdays because of President's Day on February and then Saint Patrick's Day on the seventeenth, I, horrible Irish accent.
Yeah. Um, yeah, should be good. So, I'm, I'm fine with approving motion to approve the budget schedule for fiscal year twenty twenty six budget schedule, as submitted, um, in the budget timeline document.
My second.
Yeah.
Okay.
That works, yeah. Is it possible to get those put on the Microsoft calendars and invites and everything sent out as soon as possible to, to the folks that aren't here, and then standing committees and such and things? And two fourths, and so on and so forth, yes.
Okay, so we had the motion, the who seconded over here, I'm sorry, you did, thank you. Um, hearing tonight, apparently, it's terrible, um, Four Eater.
Hi.
Adler.
Hi.
Four Dice.
Hi.
Uh, onto twenty, excuse me, thirty other business.
I didn't have anything because we went through the tax abatement information already. Anyone else have?
And, just pointing out, I didn't know if Mr. Kim really had any comments on the abatements, or if you, I, but it's his meeting, so I was asking him, you'd sat through the whole meeting and I didn't, I wanted to make sure we didn't miss you, so I was waiting till other.
No, no, you clarified it pretty good, yeah.
Just making sure. Okay, I felt bad at first, and then I didn't know if it had to do with the tax abatements, so I didn't wanna make any assumptions, so.
I don't know if you thought maybe the door was locked and you couldn't get out?
You're always invited, I just, yeah, I didn't miss you.
No, appreciate you being here. Um, Jill, Rob, anything else, you guys?
No.
Uh, a couple of things that had, uh, throughout the meeting, uh, sparked my recollection and everything, um, a non-official declaration slash request slash, I don't know how to, uh, in light of, uh, things that came up at the last meeting, um, I think this has already kind of been put out, but just a reminder, if there's any ever, uh, any citizens ever come to you guys with, with issues or complaints or what have you, uh, I would strongly encourage you forward them on to Katie, or, uh, put them in an email with said person, get them to Katie, you can include myself as well, um, that way we can make it a official, uh, documentation, official complaint, whatever, and not just, um, word of mouth or what have you, uh, that way we've got it on record if there's any, ever any issues. Um, on the flip side of things, uh, I did receive, I had a citizen come up to me last Sunday, uh, Steph and I were leaving an event, uh, I won't name said citizen, but, uh, specifically wanted to compliment, uh, a little selfish here, but specifically wanted to compliment me for the job that we've, that I've been doing as far as getting things going and the changes that I've made, but I turned it around and I said, no, it's all of us, it's all of council, it's the ladies in the office that have, we've made the changes, we've had the, the meetings, we've had the propositions, we've done all the things that we, we're, we are a team here with this, and I think we've all done a phenomenal job, so I politely corrected and I said, thank you, but it's, it's all of us up here, so, uh, so we received some praise from a, from a citizen last week, just, they've noticed the changes, they've noticed the more communication, they like what we're doing and keep doing it, so thank you to all of you guys for that, that's awesome, so.
Yeah, it's good to hear.
Yes, positive feedback for changes is, is nice, so. That's, that's all I've got. Moving on. Uh, on to number thirty-one, the children's coloring contest winners, have we had a chance to browse these as we walked in, or do we need to take a couple moments to, to browse these, or?
Just gonna mark a tally on them.
What we've done in the past is we just number them, and then everybody fix a number, and then.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Sit down and we stay okay for the first group who has what, and then if we find a number that overlaps, then that's two votes, does that make sense? There's only four of us here, well, you guys can vote too, right?
No, also we are.
So we can just go number real quick, I think is the easiest way to do it, that's okay?
I know, we're.
Do you wanna start numbering the, you know, the entities, just start wherever you want to.
Always doing that, do you understand, do you hang on to like, when?
For each different drawing, six, twelve.
Yeah.
Yep, they, they have had a drawing.
So you've got one, which is not with you.
Okay.
We have enough people with us.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I was looking it up on YouTube. Yep, that's exactly it.
We'll, we'll be voting on these in just a second, since we're not officially adjourned, so just a heads up.
It's, it's right there on the, it's right on the edge.
Yeah.
So it looks like it's floating, but it's right on, and I've got a nice railing over it, it's nice to deck it.
We don't have.
You don't have to worry about, you don't have to worry about the water feeding up and down.
Yeah, yeah.
How much do they expect our ponds to be, outside of a?
Wonderful.
How much do they really expect our, our ponds to be?
Most people are gonna be out fishing.
Future council members.
Yeah.
So do we, does the chimney release white smoke when we come to a decision?
It's chilly in here.
By the way, the furnace runs at eighty degrees. Seventy-nine.
Really?
All right, uh, so, we'll, we'll go down the table here, I'll kinda call us back to order here, uh, we'll go down the table really quick, um, so we'll start with the reindeer, I believe that was what, two to five, I believe?
Yep.
Uh, what did you guys have for the reindeer, which number?
I have number one.
Okay.
Number six.
Brad's six as well.
Okay, do I get a vote in this technically?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can vote.
Okay, I also had six, so number six takes it for the reindeer.
And then you can, yeah, we can read off whose it is if you'd like.
Vanna, could you hold up number six for the reindeer, by the, that's you. Vanna White?
I think your name is Seth.
Yeah, she, she, she's not.
Uh, it says Jack, but it says Chris Scrooge, awesome.
Show the camera, thank you, Jack and Chris.
Number ECBC.
Oh, ECBC. Yes, I'm sorry, ECBC. Uh, the next age group will be six to, uh, six, wait, no, five to seven, if I remember correctly, that'd be the snowman, what'd you guys have for the snowman?
Number eight.
Number eight?
Number six.
Number six?
I had five.
Five.
What you got?
I also had five, all right, to break the split there.
Five takes.
Five it is. Well, they're all, they're all good, they're all good.
Five monster quickly.
Hey, congratulations, and I'll, I'll include pictures of these on the end of the video here as well, uh, and then for the eight to twelve group, the Santa by the fireplace and the tree, Rob, what, which one did you have?
Number two.
Jill?
Five.
You said five, I'm sorry, five, Brad?
Five.
Five.
Ooh, we are at a split here, because I also had two, so we've got two for two and
Do we just?
Two for five.
Take those two and then read, read.
No, cuz there's four of us.
Who's the timer, it's gonna be you two or the timer?
Cover up the numbers so she doesn't know which one's five.
All right, we'll do it, we'll do it public, we'll do it public, what is it here, we've got, uh, two and five.
Gotta hide the numbers.
Hide the numbers. So it can be impartial.
Public vote, is that what you're doing? I like, have one, two, three, or five, people.
I'll say, raise your hand for my right hand. And my left hand.
There you go, number two wins it.
Number two takes it, yes.